Okay.
I thought it would've been really cool, but I didn't realize it was so political. To get in.
You know, remember John, last year at the mid-year conference in St. George, the speaker was Shriver, what was his first name?
The cave diver.
No, that was
Oh.
That was another one, but
Okay, sorry.
Shriver was, is the son, well, is the nephew of JFK and the son of Sergeant Shriver, who was married to JFK's sister, and Sergeant Shriver was the guy who started this Peace Corps. JFK said, you know, get going on this.
Very cool. It could change a lot of things. Well, it has changed a lot of things.
Yeah, I think it has. Positive force in the world, hard to find those, isn't it?
Yeah.
Soundly quiet in this Zoom call.
Sure is.
Should we call it?
Yeah. Well, we think everybody's gonna be present for this meeting, don't we? All council, that is.
As far as I can tell.
John, it's good to see you.
And you as well. I walked by your house at noon when Chris was texting me. And I missed it, but it's kind of steamy down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bet. I think it's gonna get steamier.
Which is what I remember one of our astute mayors, who might be even on this call, had said, yeah, you know, it's gonna get hotter and we're gonna get way more crowded in the winter, in the summer. Because people come up to escape the heat.
Yeah, yeah.
And where are they gonna go?
So we now have two Craigs on board here. And John, I know that Craig Elliott is not on the agenda for a little bit, but would you like to introduce him to those of us who are here?
I don't know how to do that because he's so elevated above just me. But, but the history, the history is the coolest thing that I'd like to say. It's like, you know, it's like the, the INEAD study was fantastic, but not incredibly realistic for a small town in that particular location with the extreme avalanche hazard and runoff and everything else. So we started talking about, well, what about this 2003 study? And everybody said, oh, you know, those guys are gone. Well, I found Craig Elliott. He tried to ditch me, you know, but I found him. And he was one of the principals of the firm that did the study in 2003. And was really excited to kind of revive it and say, what's the difference between 2003? And where we are now, what are the difference in the program elements, you know, so and the cost and will it fit on the site? So basically resurrecting a 20-year-old project and Craig, I'm happy you're doing this, Craig Elliott. Because who better? I mean, it's your building. So you'll get some questions today.
Okay. And you're probably gonna have, John, you're gonna have to repeat all that when the official meeting starts, so.
No way.
If I can also add one thing, I happen to be at the airport today. My mother's flight from Kansas has been moved and she's coming in at four o'clock, so if you hear some other noise, you know what's going on. Sorry about that. Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we've got a quorum here, so it is 3:00 PM Mountain Daylight Time on July 12th, 2023, and I am convening and welcoming you to the Alta Town Council Meeting of the State. This meeting is to be held as an electronic meeting without an anchor location pursuant to my binding of June 28th. And the first more order of business is citizen input, and I think we have well, first of all, welcome all. It's nice to see everybody's faces here. Full turnout. Great to have you. And I think we have some citizens who, or at least one citizen, who wants to make a statement. What's the lineup, Molly?
Yes, I did hear from Margaret Burke that she would like to make a statement, so I'm just taking a second here and she should be able to enable her video microphone momentarily. We did not receive any written comments for this meeting. And if there's anyone else that has joined the meeting that would like to make a comment, feel free to just raise your hand in Zoom on the bottom bar and I can put you online.
Oh, and Margaret Burke is at Twin Lakes Pass making this statement.
Okay. We can hear you.
Okay. I had two comments that I wanted to make today. The first was to thank the council for an opportunity to provide input to you all. And in case you haven't seen it, UDOT released their Record of Decision this morning. And I have not been through all 100-plus pages, nor all the three appendices. But I'd like the town of Alta to consider to work administratively with the Federal Highway Administration to amend regulations that have to do with exemptions for tolling operations, because as of right now, the tolling only is exempted for motorcycle and bicyclists, otherwise you have to have more than a single occupancy. And this was something that was in the final EIS, that there was a potential, and I don't have the language that I can quote, but a potential to exempt residents, service, delivery, and employees during these peak periods when the tolling is in effect. And I think this is critical to the town that there be such an exemption for these groups of people. And I'd like to encourage, as I say, the council to consider administratively trying to propose or work with a regulation to add to that exemption and/or to pursue judicial review and to ensure that that's timely done. Or we can't do it. The second comment I wanted to make was to thank you for reactivating the community center project from 2003 of EMA. And I think that it's a good location to put it where the current community center is. I think it's safer than areas to the west. And I think that in order to do that and potentially improve our cost situation, if we were able to find a temporary location for the post office, library, and deputy apartments, that potentially construction could occur in one season versus multiples, as was currently proposed in the ELIT Working Group 2023 revisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Any other members of the public out there, Molly?
I don't see anything yet. I'll just give people just a moment if they want to raise their hand and then Mayor, I'm sorry if I missed it, but at the beginning, did you mention your determination to have this as a virtual meeting?
I did say that, yeah.
I don't see any other hands raised. So then feel free to move on.
Okay, well, let's move on to the community center type plan and Craig Elliott. And yeah, John, you want to repeat that little bit of what you said or just whatever?
Sure, a little bit. I mean, you know, we went through the INEAD process, which was very it opened our eyes to a lot of different things. But the building just didn't really fit with us or our budget. So we didn't really know what to do at that point. And then somebody said, well, we had another study in 2003 by was it EMA? And I'm assuming Craig Elliott is the E of EMA and said, let's see what we can do with that. Maybe we can resurrect that. But people said, oh, no, EMA is gone. Well, we dug up Craig Elliott, even though he tried to hide, who was one of the principals of EMA, and this building is kind of one of his babies from 20 years ago. And we asked him to resurrect it and kind of move it into current day and see what we're dealing with if we were doing that building today. So with that paltry introduction, Craig, you're on for your building.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Alright. As I said before, I'm at the airport, so we'll see how this goes today, but I think it should be okay. I appreciate the comment that was earlier spoken about, and what we had shown our proposal was a way to phase the project if necessary. In our, in our review of the overall previous study, I was part, was partner with Don Mahoney in EMA Architects, and I did reach out to Don when John reached out to me to see, you know, if he wanted to be involved and he's trying to wind down his career, and he said, you can take it, Craig. So the two of us did talk about it in our previous corporate lives, which were quite a few years ago. And so what I'm gonna do is share the screen real quick, if that's okay?
Please do.
And I believe you should be able to see the study, or at least the first page, and I'm not sure if you we just went through the previous study, which is attached at the, the end of the project. And actually, initially, John reached out to me and I did a quick analysis on cost of what the previous study might be. And there was some discussion about whether or not that was appropriate number, and we went back and looked at it, and then we were asked to do a review. Sorry about that. We were asked to do a review the previous study in more detail and to analyze whether or not we felt like the current needs and what kind of modifications we might propose based on our, our knowledge of the project. And so that's really what first page is about, the purpose and the process. And and in our study previously 20 years ago, there was some question about whether or not the existing building was a viable building to maintain a work off of. And, you know, surely after 20 years, and it was questionable then, our our review of it is that it would be wise to take down the existing building and replace it with a new structure. Particularly, we don't know exactly all of the details of how it was built, but I know there's some issues with it currently. And in our analysis of that, we also looked at the site and how it went together. And our initial thoughts were, one, and we, whatever we do needed to fit within the property boundaries that were described and was dedicated from them. And we confirmed that that site would be big enough to put the project in. And the other thing we looked at was, in an effort to reduce overall costs, the excavation of the hillside, which will be quite costly, was to try and maintain a new building in its place that's in roughly the same depth, in roughly the same location, and so that it reduces the overall excavation and doesn't push the building rooftop into the side of the mountain. So that was one of the, the the things that we're looking at, trying to do something that was would say wise for the use of town funds. And then we talked about what construction phasing might be if we need to maintain the post office and possibly a UDOT facility space for their storage. And so we have a layout that does show that as a possibility, although I would highly suggest if it's possible, you build anything in one shot. So that was the, that was our first analysis. It's always less expensive and less of an issue if you can build things in one phase. Go into some of the drawings and give a rough overview of most of your time, but roughly shows how the building would sit on the site over top of an aerial photograph. And this was the one that shows the phasing if necessary, where you could build the one high vehicle bay and then one one space on the first floor and turn it into temporary post office if, if necessary. And I'll move into the layout of really along the lines of shown previous study. It appeared that a number of those things were still viable. As a gap place for community, and so it has a lot for the entire project, space, stairs. And then we have on the left-hand side, we have, we've changed the apartment configuration where there's two studio apartments.
Whoops. I think we just may have lost him. Wonders of the internet.
Yeah. Looks like he's back on, but maybe still getting connected to audio.
Yeah.
Okay, are we back?
Yes.
Okay. That was weird.
Yes.
I haven't had that happen in a while, but I'll try and get through it fairly quickly. We really tried to maintain the existing the base structure for the vehicles that were shown before. And this is all just based on our, on our knowledge of what what's there today and, and what you might need in the future. I think I was talking about the post office lobby when I dumped off. We really see that as being a town hub as a place where people come together, and it'll work as the lobby for the upstairs, because any spaces and library space above. We typically line a post office lobby. Second floor, we have a stack department on the left-hand side. You'll notice we've all, we've put all the stairs within the main structure. They're not outside of the structure. And I feel like that's a valuable. I think that's important. I think what's there today is a little bit unstable. And then we show some library space, some flexible room, and then some breakout rooms on that floor.
You're still showing them. Okay, you're on floor two now, is that right?
I just clicked over to Plan L3, Level 3. Is it showing on your screen yet?
Not yet.
No, let's I'm gonna turn my video off and see if that doesn't help us out here. Gives us a little more bandwidth.
Now we have L, we have L3 now.
Okay. That might help. And then this top floor really is your large community space, and we show library space on two floors. We also, we also know that programming of library space today is really specific to a location. And so our thoughts are, we just put in a volume on two floors that then would be programmed by your community as you went into the next phase of the project. Libraries are not just books on shelves today. They are very much a community hub, and we see this working together in all of those spaces. And then we again show the office spaces and a kitchen that would service the flex room. A large amount of storage, because typically what you see in these spaces is they don't put the storage in, and all the corners are full of tables and chairs, and they move them around. And so our thoughts are, let's make sure you have a gracious storage space. Could even move into a workroom if it really needs to, as you start to look at what your, your uses will be. And then we took another look at the architecture, just to give you an idea of the scale and what it would look like, possibly. Our thoughts are, it would be wise in this location to build a concrete structure. It would certainly help with any potential slide issues that you may or may not have. It certainly looks like there's a potential for it. Whether there has been in the past or not, I can't tell you. But this gives you an idea of what we were thinking, simple really high-quality finishes that are durable, so that it really can stay a nice building for a long time without a lot of maintenance cost. And so that's generally what we were looking at, give you an idea of how it could go. I think it gives you a stepping off point for whatever your however you would secure your funding and would be an opportunity to to be a basis for going out and hiring an architect and contractor to complete the project. I, I would highly suggest that when you do that, you take one more look at the programming to make sure it meets all of your needs. And then, then move at that point from there. In the earlier part of the study, there's a written document, and it has the program and the preliminary estimate of construction cost. And should give you an idea of what this represents, the design that is shown in this document. It shows you the types of spaces, what the costs we're projecting are. And we think with what you have today, on today's costs, that the, the total we're showing is appropriate for the scale of the building. So that's, that's it. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that might pop up.
So I suspect there are some. Anybody want to launch into questions? John Byrne, you had some, I think, thoughts on this?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I think this is actually reasonably attractive building. So I think that's good. I think there's some, some items in the cost analysis that are gonna change that $500 a foot number for $490 a foot number. I don't see an allowance for demolition of the existing building. I think the rock retention issue is still gonna be there, and, and we're gonna need to retain the rock or move the wall back. But do some rock work, so there's probably another allowance that we would need to get added. I think the foundation, you're also gonna need to have foundation work, because we're not gonna actually use the original footprint, and even if we were, I don't think we'd build it on top of a, a new center on top of a 50-year-old foundation. So those are sort of my ideas about cost. I, I think one of the reasons that the price seems so low is we're not making any provision, and, and low compared to INEAD's design, and there were a couple of different iterations of INEAD's design. Those had sort of built-in parking structures, at least the both in bed and lift, as I remember. And the number that I took away from a quick review of the INEAD study was 75 spaces. So obviously, we're not dealing with any parking here. In fact, we're gonna be crowding the road pretty tightly, so I mean, this is just my list of things that would need to be addressed. Also, I, I, you know, the UDOT Bay, UDOT's the one changing the game here with bringing us the gondola and transport hub and all this stuff. I, you know, I know that we have a you know, the original idea was they contributed to the, to the building years ago, and then we would provide sort of on an ongoing basis that garage for them. And I think it's helpful in terms of our snow removal, but I also think if we're gonna build a new community center, they need to build their own garage. And so I, I would be pressing us to get that out of the programming. And I don't really get other than I see this facilitates the discussion commencing, but you know, we're gonna build something of a replica of our existing building, and I think that that whole design constraint really should probably just go away. The thing that we have that we're constrained here in Alta is buildable footprint, that, you know, town control, town-owned, buildable footprint. And so in my mind, we should be striving to build the building that maximizes our limited resource of buildable footprint. And, and so I would, I would, you know, if we move on to the next stage, I'd like to see us go to a sort of a more wide-open canvas for the architect to establish, you know, the most efficient, the highest utilization of our buildable footprint. This is one of the few footprints we have that we're in control of, and, and I think we need to make sure we get the most out of it that we can. Those are my comments.
Let's see, before I ask Craig to respond, let's see if we, some other comments from counselors? Elise, Sheridan, Carolyn?
I concur with John's points. I think we want to look at the best, highest use of the space that we have available to us. And so I think part of this process would involve inventorying our, our current space and looking at the space and then seeing what best aligns to provide the best bang for, for the buck. And my predilection is always people over things. So are, are we creating space for more people? More housing, more, more care for people, or, or more space to store things? And, and I'd like us to, going forward, take a look at that as well.
Elise or Carolyn?
I don't have any comments. I mean, it's like, I think this is a preliminary thing. I like the fact that we are you know, trying to upgrade a building that needs to be upgraded and, you know, expand it for some of the things we need, so I think the building does look great. Hopefully, yeah, I think it is a tight squeeze there, though, with the rustler, so we will have to keep that in mind.
I think it's super exciting that we're thinking about and revisiting this again, and I really think the structure is much better than what was proposed several years ago. I do think that a lot has changed in 20 years, and maybe what we want out of something has changed in 20 years. And so you know, thinking about the parking spaces, the garage in there, and then thinking about an apartment that would be such a highly competitive space makes me kind of a little bit anxious. And so I wonder, you know, about re-sort of visiting the needs of the community and what people felt like they wanted as a gathering space or as a, a space. So you know, we've traditionally had it labeled the library. Is that, is that really what we mean and what we really want? But I'm just excited that we're talking about it.
I have a comment that dovetails into that a little bit, if, if that's okay?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think the strongest part of the INEAD process to me was the programming. And so I think, yeah, I went back and spent some time with that. This, this building is depicted as about half as big as the building that, you know, Harris proposed we build a few years ago. So it's gonna be a tight squeeze, it's gonna have to be some give. And I think this kind of ties to your point about, you know, what we need. I, I'm gonna just just go ahead and, and tie back to our last discussion of this where you know, a one sensible place to start would be to think about what our overall, think more holistically about the town's need going forward. Instead of sort of immediately focusing in on building a community center, I think just take a step back and think about what we think our, our demand for space is gonna be over the next 10 to 20 years. And you know, probably that includes a separate building for the AMO, certainly, other, potentially other buildings. I think, I think to spend a few months and try to assess that would be a logical, logical place to start. It's great having this work in the can and being able to refer to it. But I think as a, as a group, we, we ought probably start by giving some thought to what are our building and facility needs over the next five, 10 years. And if we take a few months to digress and study that issue, I think we'll probably make better decisions going forward. And then I have one little comment about the excavation. You know, I, I guess I'm less afraid about blowing up rock. I know everybody perceives it as super expensive, and you know, it's more expensive than not blowing up rock for sure. One interesting thing, though, that occurred to me after our conversation the other night, Roger, was you know, it may, we may find that that rock that's there is, is either quarryable, if I'm saying that correctly, or has some value if we pulverize it, being able to use it on site. And I think that would be neat, you know, if we, if we to help justify the excavation or, or rock work, and there's gonna have to be some rock work. You know, if we end up with a material that we can then use as you know, for siding or for retention on the adjacent properties, or just something to provide some continuity to the field, you know, we have a bunch of sort of disjoint areas on the north side of the road there. So I think that it would be worth at least studying the cost of doing some demolition to deepen the site, which could also lead to which could also lead to a parking, you know, some parking resource as well. So I like all the cards still being on the table and, and not rushing to add too many constraints to the project. Thank you.
Greg, you want to say anything? More?
Sure. Just real quick, most of the comments there are about programming. And as I said, to the end, I would go back and sit down, if you were to start this and do a deep dive into the needs for program, what spaces you need, where you need them, how big, what's the sizes, what's the priorities? So that, that would be the first thing that I would do if I was starting on the project. Second, on the construction costs, this is our best estimate. It, it includes foundations. Our expectation is that the building would act as a retaining wall because that's the most efficient, cost effective way to do it. There's other ways to do that too. And, and so, you know, from a cost perspective, I think this is a good place to look at and, and base your start from, right? It's doable for this size building and what we're looking at. We've got several other projects going on. This is a little less than twice as much the cost would be in the valley. So to kind of give you a reference point of, of what that is, that, that seems about right because of its location. The other comments, all, all valid. And, you know, as I said before, if you decided you wanted to move forward, you know, the first thing to do is sit down with the whole community and just make sure you got what you want and that you're going in the right direction.
Great. Okay, I, I want to say that I'm, I'm impressed at how quickly you were able to resurrect and update this idea and, and I must say at a very reasonable price. And I really appreciate your stepping up to this and for John's memory to to bring you back into the, into the mix here. So with that, I think we'll thank you and move on to the next agenda item. And that agenda item is Mike Mon and his update on the ski area. And I thought I saw how there that I saw Mike flash up recently.
To be joining in just a moment.
Okay.
May I, may I ask really quickly, is this one of your highest priorities for your administration to move forward with this community, community center?
I would not put it that way. I would not say that I, I, I I don't know that it's my highest priority to, to move forward the community center. I think what my highest priority is, is to figure out a way to retain the character of, of Alta as the, as the world changes in the future. This may or may not be a part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Mike.
Good afternoon. So yesterday, July 11th, 2023, our snow steak went to zero inches of snow depth. Finally had melted all at the snow steak. We still have piles of snow all over on the mountain and then the upper mountain, but at the official measuring point, we went to zero yesterday. You know, we're just a little update on season pass sales. We're, we've went through our first tier of season pass sales for next season. And volume and is about flat with the prior year. We are seeing a significant change in the amount of people buying in Alta's Snowbird season pass. And the pricing went up significantly for that product and those sales are down about 60% that particular product. This past season, you know, I'm just in case you didn't hear, it was a record for skier, skier visits nationally. Up 3 million, a record in the state of Utah. And so of the 3 million increase in skier visits nationally, 1.4 million of that increase came from the state of Utah. So you know, Utah continues to grow in volume and in visitation. We were as a ski area, it was not a record year for Alta ski area. The challenges that presented themselves in late March and into April with the road took their toll and we ended up about down 6% compared to our, our record year the year before. As we look to this next season, we're looking at continuing with a reservation system. No real changes to what we did this past season, probably continue. We have been informed that Brighton will be going to a reservation system. Solitude's going to a reservation system. Snow Basin is also considering it. And Snowbird has no plans to change what they were doing last year, which is that they had a limited amount of reservations, but most of it was first come, first served parking. The bus service is expected to be the same as last year. No changes there. As we're in our summer season, the we've been a little hampered by the snowfall and getting up on the mountain to do a lot of our maintenance and projects, but it's it's slowly getting there. And as you know, the campground has been closed and the summer road, we're still looking at the last week of July into the first week of August before that's online and fully functioning. The summer projects we have going this summer, we have a fuel island replacement, fuel tanks have been dug up and are being replaced. They had reached their end of life. We have, we've got a fair amount of excavation here going around the Wildcat Base. Our snowmaking, main snowmaking lines, the first ones that were installed have kind of reached their end of life. And so we're, we are replacing them. That'd be limited really to where you can kind of see lines laying on the ground right now. Those, that's where that work needs to occur primarily. We have a project of installing five more V-Sent, no, six more V-Sent towers, five or six on Mount Baldy. That is, you know, they were hopefully going to be underway by now, but it's been pushed back a little bit. And that will involve helicopters flying when that project gets going underway. And so that's coming here later in the summer, probably end of July, start first of August would be where we're looking at starting at. But as soon as we've got some of that area clear, that they can start their work, we hope to get that going. Probably in the next week or so, hopefully. The Supreme train changes, we still have some train changes to do in Upper Supreme. We're hoping that towards the end of the month here, that we'll be able to get to, you have a third party contractor that'll be helping us with those this year. Hope to get them into there. And then in the fall, we will be doing a little snowmaking line extension from Alfs up to the bend, roughly the bend parking area. Is what we're looking to do there and submit potentially some maintenance around Alfs, the with the runoff and the creek side retaining wall needs some work up there. It's that, but those are the major projects we have going on this summer. We have a bunch of little minor ones. We also are working on designing an expansion for the Albion Day Lodge to the east. Forest Services, we went through the NEPA process with the Forest Service, they've approved that. So we're moving into the design phase where we'll actually design the building structurally and be working with the town of Alta on that as well as across the Albion lot on the north side of the Albion lot, kind of in the, the flattest spot of the Albion lot, if you were up there. We're working with the Forest Service on, trying to obtain approval to build an equipment storage building, air cold storage building, about 10,000 square feet where we could store things like V-Sent Tower, V-Sent boxes and all the stuff that we kind of haul up and down the canyon every spring and, and fall. Looking to have storage on site. So we're not driving it all the way out to the copper pit almost and and saving on, on that process and having that here in the town of Alta. We're also going through the NEPA process with the Forest Service on several other projects. One is we've asked to, or striving to eliminate the roadside parking in the town of Alta from the bypass road up to the Deep Powder House, except for about 10 spots across the street from the Our Lady of the Snow. And, you know, we've eliminated the roadside parking that was in South Flagstaff, the parallel parking that with the traffic calming feature there, that's no longer available. And so our proposal to the Forest Service is to initially it was to square up the Wildcat Parking Lot on the north and south sides. We ran into some issues, making adjustments on the south side of the parking lot. And so now we're looking at just a north side adjustment in that parking lot and then going to the Grizzly Parking Lot. The Grizzly Lot's kind of weird shape. It's kind of like an elongated hourglass with bigger parking areas on both ends. And then it's kind of narrow in the middle. You can only park one side, you can do perpendicular parking and the other side you can do parallel parking. And we're looking to maintain a 60 foot width through the narrow part to make adjustments, combination of some on the north side, some on the south side to maintain a consistent 60 foot width through there that would allow us to have the perpendicular parking on both sides. That's in the review process. And then we are also looking at some adjustments to our just west of the Albion Ticket Office where we have the ski school conveyor. It's, that ski school conveyors build up on a little, quite a berm. And it was built there years ago to allow little kids, level one kids coming out of the skis Albion Ticket Office, bottom of the ski school to make it over to that conveyor, use that and get back. And we have found that we need to have a conveyor for adults somewhere, beginner level skiers, that the cross toe has become a little bit of too much of a challenge for some of those people. Where's that last pitch? So we are proposing moving some toes around over there, moving the ski school conveyor and, and adding another longer conveyor to better accommodate level one, level two skiers and getting people from down around us, just, just east of the Snow Pine lift back up to the Albion side. So we're going through a process with the Forest Service there. It involves looking at the wetlands and the historic town of Alta's site. All of those things. So those are a couple projects we're in the works, you know, with the UDOT EIS coming out, we're hoping that UDOT then is going to start coming and talking to us and the town more about you know, this potential bus stop that's supposed to be between the Alta Lodge and the Rustler. And the tolling issue and a few other things that looks like in their phased approach, the lot of that planning is supposed to be occurring starting this year. So we're looking forward to kind of refining that process and see what it means for the ski area in the town of Alta in the future that are there. So that was a little overview. Is there any questions or anything else I could maybe answer question for you?
I, I would call it a big overview, not a little overview. Yeah, this, some other thoughts, questions, whatever. John, you look like you're
I'd just make one note, I, I, you know, A, I congratulate you on all the summer activities going on. I see the projects from the environmental center and and all the other things that you've got going on and, and the road's not even open yet. But I had to put a plug in for the summer camp. My granddaughter went to the summer camp. And she cannot stop talking about it. She just had the best time. It was awesome. And she's still wearing her wristband three weeks later. So.
Well, that's great. Well, Elsie's doing a great job with that. That's grown. You know, a little bit over the last few years and they've got a great staff and you know, it continues to gain a popularity and they're turning people away and you know, it's sometimes a little challenging to make all that work with the construction practice we go, we've got going on, but so far it's been working well.
Well, we learned our lesson that we need to book a couple of weeks, two or three weeks at the start of the summer, you know, so that, because we thought, well, give her a week and see how it goes and, and congratulations on the success. And it was a great experience for her. Thank you. I'll pass that on to her.
So how about for those of us without an eight year old granddaughter, give us a little a little paragraph of what the summer camp is all about?
So, so the summer camp is, you know, the Alta Children's Center that runs a daycare business in, in the winter. She runs a summer camp. And it's, John, is it two weeks or four weeks program?
I know we signed up by the week, but I think there were six or eight weeks offered.
Yeah. So they, they take a certain number of children in that age group and they have all kinds of, you know, they take them out on hikes and they learn about the, the mountain and bean stewards and have all sorts of projects and, and things that they do. And it's
They went to Lisa Falls and it was the, it's the, one of the activities that I keep hearing about. And I know my granddaughter is ready to lead me on a hike to Lisa Falls.
But it's great to get them outdoors and, and interacting with others, with other, with other youth, but they also learn in the process of some things that's about the environment and Alta and that's here.
Any other questions of Mike? I have a comment. Okay, Carolyn, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I have a question and a comment. So if you want to see more of what the camp kids are doing, if you walk on Barb's Trail, at the end of Barb's Trail, there's a lovely wooden teepee. There's a little chair. They, I often, I walk there a lot and I oftentimes see the little campers there and they really are having a lot of fun, Mike. That is really a lovely program that Alta puts on. And I, if I heard you correctly, you said something about expanding the Albion Day Lodge. And I am putting in a little plug for, and I'm sure it's on the agenda, but some type of further employee housing.
Yeah, the, so the day lodge expansion will include, you know, we're really short on storage. So there's a little storage back in there. But additional seating for on the day lodge level, the restaurant level be, you know, we really don't have a day lodge that's Republican just go on brownback. They kind of use that space. And so the thought is to keep that as a multifunctional space, but increase, increase the square footage so that people can come and have room. The ski school continues to grow in size and they've been using a sign up more and more of that, that space too. It would involve also the, the, you know, a ski tune shop over in there and storage for our retail. Potentially moving Alta Java into the, into the expansion, maybe and, and providing a little indoor space for that as well as outdoor space. And then the top layer, the top level would all be in employee housing. Is what we're looking at trying to do.
Great. Cause I also heard 10,000 square feet of storage coming. And I thought, oh, maybe that's another place for another few apartments. I, I know so many people struggled commuting this year that are our key employees. And so I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that, that, that you're doing that, Mike.
So when you talk about the top level, are you adding the story, one more story to the Albion Day Lodge? Is that the idea?
No, the, the addition on the east side would be a story higher than the rest of the building.
I see.
It would, you wouldn't go as deep in the ground because you've moved further up the, up slope a little bit. So you'd lose a story in the ground, but you'd gain it, we'd have it go a story higher. And that, and that hopper story would be primarily employee housing.
Got it.
We're in the very preliminary stages. We haven't, we haven't got an architect in the loop yet. We're hoping to do that soon and and then we'll be able to start to get some design and get a better idea whether the, the programming will work for the space.
One comment I would like to make is this trail map that is now out and there's often some kiosk around is really first class and this is, this is really a significant upgrade. And particularly with descriptions of the various trails and classified as easy, intermediate and expert and a little something about each one. I thought that, that is a welcome addition to our community. Addition to our community. And um. I would encourage. Putting that trail map on a bigger. Signboard at a couple of places. I mean, I'm, I'm reminded of the uh ski trail maps that are around and people. Go up to them and point with their pole and say, well, let's go here or there and. This, the, they're, they're great planning tools. So um. If you can see a opportunity to do that, I would encourage it.
Thank you for the feedback and uh I'll make sure our team knows about that and we'll make that consideration too about the bigger boards.
Okay. Anything else for Mike? Okay, thanks, Mike. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go to the consent agenda and the town council. Meeting minutes, staff and finance reports and um. Are there um? What I would like to do is uh entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. John, second. Um. Comments?
Roger, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, so um, and we sort of made a plan for me to make this comment. Uh. If you all on the council read my staff report, you will have seen my note about the planning commission meeting. Uh, we are having a planning commission meeting next Tuesday, the eighteenth of July. Um. We were considering including a proposal to update the land use appeal authority ordinance to remove the town council as the appeal authority. And designated administrative law judge in that capacity that's becoming common practice in some Utah communities. Um. We did get some feedback uh on that pretty much immediately after publishing the council packet. Um, we had some discussions over the weekend and then on Monday. Um. You know, we acknowledge this is a significant proposal. It's a somewhat technical and obscure topic. And you know, regardless of the, the arguments themselves, it was clearly not the. The right pathway to simply include that on a planning commission agenda. With the assumption the council would um, you know, simply take it up for final adoption. In upcoming meeting. So, long story short is that we've taken this item off the agenda for the planning commission meeting. That agenda is finalized and it will be posted in the next twenty-four hours. Um, cancel the notice of public hearing that went out on Friday. We don't at this time have any plans to otherwise bring the concept forward. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear with the council. I know council members have been discussing that and. Um. See if you guys have any questions about it.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Could. Could I ask for a clarification? It, it's my understanding and and I'm not sure if. You'll be able to be the final answer on this, but it's my understanding that we as council are the. Um, land use authority, that we're not simply the arbiters of any disputes, but. The. Town of Alta Council is the land use authority in Alta. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure it's entirely correct. The planning commission. Uh, makes land use decisions, but land use decisions are not the same as. Uh, land use decisions are. Are not zoning amendment or zoning ordinance. Uh, changes. So you do have to approve uh changes to land use ordinance such as. Updates to a zoning ordinance. You have to approve the general plan. Um. You would have had to approve this. Um, this proposal to update the land use appeal authority ordinance. Um, but land use decisions are on things like um, the amending. Excuse me. Oh, excuse me. Updating subdivision plaits, approving setbacks. There are um. Components of, of development review under some of our zones in the town of Alta that the planning commission makes. Um, and that is. What I understand to be the land use authority. So the title land use authority is a technical. Legal term. Um, and the, and the planning commission is the land use authority. And John Goldener just texted me that that was the correct answer. So. Um, so the answer is that the planning commission is the land use authority and that's the case in every Utah municipality under state law.
Thank you.
I, I'm really happy to see us move away from the idea of. Uh, removing the council as the uh.
Yeah.
Uh, the council from its role of this. I feel like we already have. A- unless we're rewriting the general code or the general plan, we don't really have much of an ongoing role in planning and zoning. And I think. Uh, being the appeal authority. Sort of keeps us in the game. It's a reason for us to pay attention. It gives us a voice in zoning matters because ultimately we are the appeal authority. So. I think it's a good decision to uh to withdraw that element from the coming agenda and uh and leave things uh status quo.
And if I could add just one clarification, the, the council can affect. The way that the planning commission operates by passing ordinance that deals with that. It, you know, it has to go through the planning commission, but. The planning commission simply administers the ordinance that the council passes. And then once the planning commission makes a decision, the appeal authority goes to the council. To decide if the planning commission correctly decided the, the issue. And so there is still that control. Um, overall. And so I think in that framework, it, it makes sense.
And thank you. I appreciated our conversation, Chris, to talking about how some municipalities were looking at this and I. I don't think we should end this conversation saying that we can't discuss what. Other municipalities are looking at doing in terms of. Um. Maintaining the status quo for Alta or not. I, I, I welcome continuing this discussion is, I guess, my short answer.
Sounds good.
Yeah, my comment to that, Sharon, it would be. We all ought to be on the lookout. For better ways to do stuff. And if, and if. Better ways present themselves, let's. Give them some consideration. Uh, I want to make one comment on the uh. Uh, the uh staff reports and that is, I like to. To uh. Ask Mike Maury to expand a little on. Uh, what is, the short form is see something, say something.
Uh, I, I think I got the meaning of uh. Your ask there, Mayor. Um. Yes, we've had a remarkable um. Couple of months after the end of the ski season and it's included some pretty high-profile incidents. We've had um. Two auto thefts in the last uh several months, which is just. Um, extraordinary for this town. Um, yeah, and those come on the heels of a couple of business burglaries um. And uh, we, we've had a. Uh, fairly significant rise in crimes against persons calls, you know, with some of the summer events going on around town at some of the. Facilities, so. Uh, it just really underscores. Uh. Our, our need to work closely with everybody in the community and please, if, if, you know, anybody sees anything that just looks out of place suspicious, um. Uh, give us a call. We would. Far prefer to uh send a deputy uh only to find that, you know, nothing's wr- wrong is occurring than to arrive too late to do anything about it. So uh. You know, it's just a plea. Um, you know, please keep your eyes and ears open and let us know what you're seeing.
Okay. While we have Mike, would it be appropriate to um get an update on the? Uh, noise. Uh, how's the noise thing going this, this summer? Are we doing okay? Or we've been having lots of complaints?
Well, year, year to date, we've had one uh noise complaint and uh that involved a contractor working after hours over the uh. Uh, Powder Ridge area. And that contractor had left uh by the time our uh deputy arrived. So we've made our communication uh by means of the caretaker there and uh. We believe that situation's in compliance now. Um. You know, I, I might add just for um everybody's awareness that um, you know, with the helicopter work um going on. Some of the areas that the Alta Ski Lifts. Uh, needs to do work in or not accessible by vehicle right now. So they have um. Sought uh a variance on a couple of Sundays. For earlier uh helicopter flights. And my understanding is that that's been conditionally approved on a week by week basis. Um, and as the mountain becomes more accessible by vehicle, um. You know, the need for that request will uh will diminish.
Thank you.
Bill, how many? With Mike up, anybody else have any comments, questions, thoughts?
Marshall, do you have a sense of uh an overall trend? That is wider than just Alta with regard to the crime that we're seeing?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, Salt Lake County wide. Um, you know, all of the canyons are experiencing. You know, these, these same kind of issues. Yeah, there are. Uh, more people, um, you know, we, I think we're all aware that society's behavior has changed pretty uh drastically in the last few years. And so uh. I, I wouldn't say we're having a crime wave, but I, I think it is fair to say that, you know, we're, we're seeing more than we're used to seeing. Um, and. A little crime in Alta goes a long way with the staff that we've got. Uh. You know, a burglary investigation can go on for weeks and uh, yeah, that's, that's a tough task.
Yeah, good point. Anything else for Mike? Okay, uh, let's move to the, the mayor's report.
Mayor, before we do that, we do still need to vote on approving the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Um. It's, it was moved and seconded that we uh approve the consent agenda.
And we discussed it, but we've not voted on it.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Molly. Keeping me on track. Uh. All right, so the mayor's report, um. My sense is it's. And it may just be in comparison to where we were a couple of months ago, but it's been a relatively quiet month in Alta. Honestly, due to the record snow fact that continues to melt. Fortunately, and this is just really. Luck. The temperatures have been mild and didn't trigger any big. Record. Didn't. Any rapid melt events? And so um, we haven't had any. Washouts or floods that I'm aware of that are uh significant. Uh, and. I was going to announce some really breaking news, although someone upstaged me on this, namely the record of decision. Where the Phil Cottonwood. Uh. Transportation. Arrangement, the EIS was released this morning. It codifies that UDOT preferred alternative of uh gondola from Lakai to Snowbird in Alta. Uh, but I was, I would say that some entities like Los Hetch Run. Uh, Development Council and other entities have strongly advocated. That phases one and two could be completed before and evaluated before moving to phase three. Phase three is the gondola construction. Phase one is improved bus service and tolling, which we already see is. Somewhat controversial and phase two is snowsheds. The capital cost of this project is um, is, is reported this morning, seven hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. And the um annual operating maintenance cost is seven point seven million. Uh. Third, the. This weekend is forecast to be very hot in the valley with highs of, of the order of as much as a hundred and five. Which is um hot, but nothing like sort change Saint George where the forecast highs are like ten degrees more. Hundred and fifteen. So I expect there will be many visitors to Alta, which I would. Characterize as climate refugees coming up here just to. Get out of the heat. Uh. As I think uh Chris mentioned, there's a planning commission meeting scheduled at four P M on. The eighteenth and the meeting will be hydro, hybrid. Uh, with um, or maybe hybrid. I think is that the right term, Chris? Maybe hybrid?
You know, I. Think we have, we, we published it. We're gonna notice it as a remote meeting. Um, okay, all right. The space needs some work and we're sort of, we're, we're heading towards a hybrid meeting for the August planning commission meeting. Um. So meetings after that will hope will, will all be at least hybrid.
Got it. Okay.
I believe you meant the August town council meeting.
Say that again?
Council meeting. Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um. There's a council mayor's meeting here next week on the light twentieth and it'll be an opportunity to show off our town as a beautiful place. And uh emphasize the fragility of that beauty. Our next meeting will, this, of this group will be on Wednesday, the ninth at two, at six P M. And it is expected to be hybrid. And it'll be followed by a truth and taxation hearing related to pro-proposed town property tax increase. And, and I'm sure you were all were waiting for the astronomy report. Uh. Mars, it turns out, has. Its spin axis at about the same angle to this orbital plane. As does Earth. And so as a result, they have seasons. And. Tomorrow, July thirteenth, is the beginning of northern summer on Mars. There you are. Okay, uh. The uh, are we um? This, the amendment to the Alta Inter Lodge uh ordinance, are we? Is that still ripe for today?
Uh, yes, it is, Mayor. Um, I, I. I think we're gonna let uh Mike Maury and Cameron speak to that. They're.
Okay, good.
Those who started the project and just to be clear, this is not a. Uh, we're not asking for, for action. We just wanted to. Introduce the concept of uh inter lodge ordinance revisions and then show you the draft that we're working on.
Cameron, you want me to take the first stab at this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh. You know, so with the remarkable winter we just had, um, you know, Inter Lodge took on a uh. You know, a bigger meaning, I suppose, and um. That prompted us to take, you know, a look at the ordinance and. By and large, our inter lodge ordinance hasn't been touched since it was, you know, put into effect in nineteen eighty. And so uh, we've been reviewing this as staff and. Uh, we believe it's a good idea to update the ordinance to more closely uh match the reality of our practices. Um. Um, also combined with uh. You have the action that you've all taken uh to shift uh. A good amount of the mayor's. Operational responsibilities to the town manager. Uh, we, we saw an issue uh probably for some language cleanup there in the ordinance as well where the uh. Pre, the existing ordinance uh. Gives the mayor the authority to exempt an individual or individuals from inter lodge on a one-time basis. Um, but it's never made um. Mention of the marshal's office authority to do that. Um, we know from experience that that authority exists and is carried down through the office of the mayor to us, but it. Would be cleaner to say it specifically in the ordinance that that is a power of the marshal's office. So we're suggesting that as one of the changes. And uh also recommending change from mayor to town manager to be more consistent with the action that you've all taken. Um. Really, uh. Bulk of the ordinance would remain unchanged, um. Until you get down to the exceptions category and presently, the ordinance uh. Says that snow pile operators, cat operators and private security personnel is identified by the Alta Ski Lift Company. Shall also be exempt on the condition that they are made aware of the hazards of travel during inter lodge. And on the condition that the lift company identifies involves harmless to the town in writing from any claims arising from travel during inter lodge periods. Um, yeah, the Alta Ski Lifts does not presently have a security department, um. And realistically, the amount of travel um that is needed uh. For preparations during an inter lodge morning uh goes beyond our historic description. So we propose to say that the uh. Alta Ski Lift Company uh Avalanche Program Director or their designee uh with the approval of the marshal. Within their special use permit area boundaries, provided that they coordinate with the marshal's office. And UDOT Avalanche forecasters during explosives mitigation. and UDOT avalanche forecasters during explosives mitigation work. Necessary travel is defined as essential to the basic operation of facilities and not conducted as a convenience. Uh, the Alta ski lift company shall maintain accountability and tracking and of travel during inter lodge periods. So really, this is what we do anyway. Um, we work closely with the avalanche office. Um they do us a great service by monitoring the movement of their critical personnel as they're doing their different preparation uh missions. Um, so that we don't have to bog Alta Central down with that. We have every confidence uh that they're working with us. Um, and I I think giving them the autonomy to uh move people around within their special use permit um as provided that they're coordinating with us is is really kind of a no brainer because it's what we do anyway. Um, so we wanted to clean up that language change in the ordinance. Um, also in, you know, doing a little research, uh, we've discovered that neither party, the town or the ski lift company um can produce a document um uh home hardware, whole harmless or an indemnification document. And so we've discussed um informally uh getting that document um executed on the books, and Cameron has been active with that. I don't know, Cameron, if you want to talk about the the updates there.
Yeah, so along with the updates recommended, uh, the marshal's office recommended. I wondered if we could just put uh an indemnity waiver in the ordinance. Turns out we can't uh do that. And so uh, some preliminary uh discussions with this area, they're uh completely in favor of the uh indemnity agreement. They have no problem providing that. And so they said they'd work with us to do that. Uh, we just need to get the final language of the ordinance passed, and then we can get that agreement in place and their support of it.
So, uh, again, this is largely a housekeeping um measure, you know, to bring our uh ordinance language current with our existing practices. We've met with the lift company. Um, they seem to be enthusiastically supportive of the idea and uh you know, with uh your guidance, would like to move forward in in uh, you know, getting this before you uh for adoption.
Questions, thoughts?
Sounds great. I think after the year we had, that really tested any inter lodge stuff we've ever had. It's a great, great time to follow up with a update. I think it's a really good idea.
Yeah, I thi- I think we don't want to answer these questions when it's snowing. So that's why we're approaching you now.
Definitely.
Good idea.
Yeah, I agree. I I read the uh ordinance. It actually looks like it's in pretty good shape with your revisions. And uh, you know, anything that's gonna create or facilitate greater cooperate, even greater cooperation between the marshal's office and uh this area, I think is a good thing. So I'm supportive of this moving ahead.
Thank you. And I want to be clear that um nothing in this changes the town's authority to um declare an inter lodge. Um, nothing in this changes the town's authority to enforce a violation and including with the ski area. So if there's somebody that uh is moving around outside and they have not gotten that clearance from the avalanche uh official at the ski area, then that is still an inter lodge violation. Um, I I I think it's a I think Cameron's done a great job getting us the wording that we need for this uh to to work uh in our present reality.
You guys did a remarkable job last year. I am so incredibly grateful. And it was so stressful for all parties. I I have two questions for you, Mike. How many um citations and how many payments was there? Like, the thing that goes on our door, you know, says that there's a fine. Did did anyone ever pay a fine? That's one question I have.
Um, Molly, you might have to bail me out of this because I don't remember the number of violators we had over, uh, off the top of my head. But there were several. Um, we did initiate several prosecutions of uh, a few of them requested court dates, and I believe the town has prevailed in the prosecution of all of those, and we've collected our thousand dollar fines.
Yeah, there definitely was a handful. Um, fines did kind of range a little bit depending on the exact case, between five hundred and a thousand dollars, I think.
I I would say anecdotally, we probably made three times arrests that we would in a typical um winner. Um, I I would say on the flip side of that, that the awareness was so high, um we had fewer violations from the people in the know than we're used to.
That
real- really our violators uh were not residents or employees uh where we prosecuted. They were uh people who chose to uh you know, gutted out during the very, very long closures. Um you know, then they uh got to the point where they were frustrated. They didn't want to be inside and they just declared, hey, this rule's not for me. And um, they were all pretty flagrant.
Interesting.
So Carolyn left and just kept joining us again. So she caught all that.
Yes. It ditched me, looked right in the middle of Mike's comments.
No, we, did you, did you get your answer, Carolyn, about uh number of uh violators and fines?
I did, just mostly that there were quite a few, which is fantastic. I I I am happy to hear that. Um, the other thing that I thought was a little bit weird this year was it was sometimes difficult. Um knowing when inter lodge was on off, but it was such a weird thing. Mike, did you do, did you guys look at um? And sometimes the internet went out and different things. And I can imagine that Alta Central got inundated, but like all kinds of weird uh questions and comments. Did, did, did you look at revamping any of that information? Or do we all think, hey, this was just a one-off of a year and we have a great system in place and we're not touching it?
Well, so one of the biggest things that happened during one of those crisis times was we had a big power outage. And we found out the hard way that our thirty-year-old generator at Alta Central needs to be replaced. And when that device um goes down, uh, we lose phones, we lose internet. Um, you know, we go back to the stone ages. And in that instance, it did um hamper our ability to get fast messaging out. And so we had to default by, you know, to doing those things with cell phones. So, but I think overall, our learning tools are are pretty good, you know, um it it underscores the need to, you know, uh you know, if you live, work, visit Alta, you've got to stay on top of the information that might affect you. And uh you know, working with UDOT Cottonwoods, I think things are getting better and continuing in the right direction, but you know, we are have definitely seen um with so many more short-term rental opportunities in town. A little bit of a void in the signage requirement. Um, I think we were able to get that fixed during this past winter and uh, everybody that was unaware that they needed to post a sign and be on our alerting list um was made aware and made the necessary uh adjustments. And I think you you had got bumped off the call um when I was commenting that the violations that we did see uh were were not local people. They weren't owners. They weren't residents. They weren't employees. Uh, these, these were you know, rental people who just decided the rule wasn't uh you know, wasn't working out well for them. And and they were all pretty flagrant. And in each case, they knew inter lodge uh was in effect. They just chose differently.
Mike's um mention of the generator needs replacement is one of the significant capital endeavors we're taking on this winter. This summer, rather, this summer. Some of them triggered by last uh winter's uh awakening. Uh, and I like to report that we have some of the uh water projects underway. And by underway, I mean the earth is moving. The uh they're um uh you know, there's stuff. When I see people digging in the ground, I think something's happening. And that's, that's going on. Uh, okay, um new business. John, Elise, Sheridan, Carolyn. No new business? Really? All right. Okay, in that case, we might um uh you know, to have a preview of uh next August meeting. I think you're Sheridan, you're gonna be the star attraction. With uh some presentation on uh affordable housing. Uh, deferred from this like this week. Okay, you're you're up. Great. All right, uh. If there's no one else, if no one else wants to say anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. No discussion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See, I hope to see it before next month, but not in this format. Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Happy summer. Take care.
Yeah.